Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Thursday, May 29th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. Pursuant to ARS 38431028, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app, or via phone by calling (602) 609-7513, or (888) 680-6714. Conference ID 969237107. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call (520) 432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Roll call. Crosby District 1 is here. District 2?
Gomez is here.
And District 3?
Antonori is here.
All right, so we've got all three of us, and we've got introductions. We've got Ms. Sharon Gilman, and Mr. Joe Casey, and myself at the table this morning, and a group of about 15 in the audience, and that's just a wonderful thing. So Ms. Gilman, would you care to brief us on our items for discussion today?
Sure. So we're going to start with our agendas for next week, starting on Tuesday. We have our library, jail, and by control district meetings. The library is the only one with an additional action item on their agenda for the E-Rate Consulting Services. This has to do with their internet services and wireless services at the libraries, and Amady is here to provide more information.
Okay. Amady, would you care to address us this morning, please?
Good morning, supervisors. So this item is to renew an agreement with Yavapai County for E-Rate Consulting Services. They offer this through their educational service agency, and this is an agreement that's been in place since 2017. Each time it runs for three years, so it was renewed in 2020, 2022. And this is important for us because the E-Rate program reimburses the cost of internet service at our rural branch locations. The reimbursement is based on the rate of free lunch in the school district here. So we do get reimbursed about 85% of the cost of that internet service. We've been in the program since 2001, 2002, and so this has been important for us. It's a good program, but it's complex. So the consulting costs $2,500 a year, and we receive $12,000 to $15,000 in reimbursement each year, so it covers its own cost.
Thank you very much. Mr. Casey, do you have any comments on the internet service provided at the library? For instance, maybe the public is interested in filters.
I don't have any comments specifically for that. Going to the filter, that's conversation you have to have on the side on what they're looking at there. But yeah, no, the E-Rate is a great program. It's something that we work with, you know, through the years to make sure that the library has good internet.
Okay. Yes?
We do have filtering on the internet at all of our locations and on the Wi-Fi in compliance with state law.
Okay. And what does that comprise of in briefly? What does state law have to say about filtering internet at the library?
So state law says that public libraries must be in compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act, which bars obscene materials, illegal materials, and certain other categories, and we have always been in compliance with that.
Thank you, Ms. Ricketts. I think that'll probably cover it for...
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. My question is, so is this internet service for all your libraries, like Portal and, you know, the ones that are out in the rural community?
Yes, ma'am. So this, this covers the service at the five rural branches we operate, but not at the town and city libraries. Some of them participate in E-Rate on their own behalf.
Okay. Thanks very much.
I apologize, Madam Gomez, for not seeing your hand raised or whatever. I've got to look it up for big strength.
That's okay.
Any further questions, Mr. Antonori?
Nope, we're good.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ricketts. I appreciate your participation this morning, and so let's move on to the...
The field district. Foreign Dr. Meeting. I am going to be adding an action item later today for the board to consider a resolution ending the jail district tax as per the settlement agreement on the Lichance litigation. That resolution is currently under review with the county attorney's office, and if things I get that back, I'll add it to the agenda. It would be effective, the tax would end effective July 31st. That's the information we have from Arizona Department of Revenue. That's the fastest turnaround we could do with 60 days.
Okay. Well, I noticed the sheriff and Mr. Bradshaw are with us this morning, and I'd be glad to hear comments either today or at the meeting on Tuesday if you care to. Okay, then we'll just go on to the next item, which is going to be, well, we said we're going to skip the flood control district because they didn't have any items coming.
Right.
So we're going to move to the regular board meeting, which is June 3rd coming up. Would you care to tell us your thoughts on the board meeting coming up?
We have some standard consent agenda items. One consent agenda item that the board might want to know more about is that there is a resolution designating Ms. Monica Miranda as our chief fiscal officer for submitting the fiscal year 26 annual expenditure limitation report. This is a resolution we do every year. The board has to designate a person as the chief fiscal officer for the auditor general requirements to submit that annual expenditure limitation report. So this is pretty standard procedure, just Monica is our finance director, so it's traditionally and appropriately enough she's the person.
Okay, I do notice that Ms. Miranda is with us today, but unless you care to, okay, she's nodding her head in the negative, so we'll just proceed, and we'll hear about that for the consent agenda next Tuesday. So proceed, please.
We have some public hearings. We can't discuss those items here today as we know public hearings, because the people involved have their appropriate time for deliberation at that meeting on Tuesday. So we'll skip those hearings as soon as we can. Okay, one way. Then on action item, it should be seven, there's a typo there, zero. Action item, agenda number seven, is a work plan for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Animal and Animal Health Inspection Services and Wildlife Services. This is, should be under the sheriff's office. It also doesn't have a heading. This is an agreement related to services that USDA can provide that our animal control cannot on wildlife. So Kenny Bradshaw, Commander Bradshaw is here to give the board more info.
Well, that's wonderful, Mr. Bradshaw. Please go ahead.
Good morning. This is an annual renewal for our Wildlife Services Officer. He handles all the wildlife calls in, for destructive, sick, anything like that, animals in the county. We've had this agreement for more than almost 20 years. So they're asking for just under $2,000 increase in the contract this year for his salary, and that's pretty much it. I mean, if you have a coyote in your chicken coop, he's the one that goes and takes care of it.
Appreciate that.
I disagree with that. I take care, I take care of the coyotes in my chicken coops. I got the pictures to prove it.
The importance of having healthy wildlife, and that's the...
Oh, yeah.
...involved.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Gomez, did you have any further comments?
Yes, is he the gentleman to call about wild cats in Douglas, which I gather are feral cats that have been out, been out there for a long time and are breeding and create more wild cats because it's a concern? So would he be the person that people could call?
No, ma'am. Our animal control officers take care of those.
So animal control takes care of that?
Right. So all domestic is animal control, all agriculture, horses, goats, stuff like that is our ranch patrol, and then wildlife, actual wildlife is our Wildlife Services Officer.
So do you, how many people do you have on the ranch patrol? Is this, this increase just for one, or?
No, this is, so there's two people, two deputies that are assigned to the ranch patrol.
Right.
And we only have one Wildlife Services Officer through the USDA.
Okay, so one of them is the Wildlife Officer?
No. So ranch patrol, yeah, they're separate. Ranch patrol and the Wildlife Officer are separate.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Question. What is the relationship funding wise with Mr. Tomlinson and the USDA and the state? Because I thought he was employed by the state.
He is. So this is a contract and agreement with the state where we supplement the income. We pay for a part of the vehicle, his fuel, things like that.
Okay. So it's a, it's a federal money coming through the state?
Yes.
Okay.
More or less, yeah.
That's fine. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Bradshaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You go.
It's the resolution to clarify the role, authority, and responsibilities with the county administrator. Rescinding the resolution, Home 315, which was the previous resolution that the county had operated.
Is that what that?
That one that will be rescinded in place of Resolution 2511. We've met, I've met with the board at various work sessions and executive sessions to discuss concerns regarding the current resolution and improvements that can be made, updates, and this resolution brings all that into one document clarifying the role and authority.
Okay. So as of today or tomorrow, Ms. Lowenstein, will, will all this information be posted for the public to see on our website? All the attachments and so on and so forth?
On Friday when we post the agenda, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's going to be item number seven.
And then on Friday, we will have the organizational chart that reflects the current reporting structure. This kind of goes hand in hand with that resolution of the appointed departments and how they report to the county administrator as well as to the board.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, rather Gomez, your hand.
Yeah, I'm looking at the one that you sent yesterday, I think it was, right, Sharon? On the organizational chart? And so the solid lines are seen as operational, or no, the solid lines are administrative and the dash lines are operational? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So operational means overseeing budgets, right?
Correct.
Okay. So when we look at, I'm sorry, when we look at the one, they have the Cochise County citizens, and then you have the Board of Supervisors, I don't see any connection to the elected officials' offices where we oversee their budgets.
It's in statute.
I'm sorry?
It's in the ARS. The, under 11251 is, I don't know, 60, 60 paragraphs or something like that, has to do with the, the role of the Board of Supervisors. Probably most explicitly is our relationship with the treasurer, I would say.
Okay. So then do we, looking at this organizational chart, I don't see the Board of Supervisors connected to any of the elected officials. So I'm just wanting to make sure I understand how it operates, and that's my question.
If I could, if I could jump in, Ms. Gomez. So, so it's, it's basically, the administrative control basically flows through Sharon and Joe for their management. They do their performance evaluations, they do the hiring and firing of those, of those officers. The operational control is the policy, the policy guidance that we provide to the, to the various directors as the three of us together, as a board would provide direction to them to execute certain policies under the purview of the board. And then that accountability to us, of course, for executing those policies as, as desired. But the administrative management resides with the county administrator and deputy county administrator. That's basically the differential with regard to the role officers. I think Mr. Crosby said it well. I think it's kind of implied that we have very limited authority over them because they're independently elected officers, and the only thing that we do is related to the budget, which Title 11 clearly specifies. So I think, I don't know, I don't think we need to put that on the org chart.
Okay. I, just as somebody who heard a lot of different, a lot of different, I would say, I guess, responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors, I had always heard from different sources that we have a role in the budget. So I just am thankful that this has been very clear, that we really don't have over the, like, the recorder or the school superintendent. Is that correct?
I would say you're...
You're getting warmer, but you need to read it. Read 11251, and it, first of all, it starts out something like, subject to all provisions of the law, or every, I don't know, something like that, some big huge thing where, well, you, to actually understand what our authority is and everybody else's authority, you have to know all the law. It's the subject of the provisions of the law or something like that. That's impossible. And so it's somewhat of a balancing act. For, for point number 16, which you probably looked at, I wrote, I wrote, Ms. Gilman, three messages back. I said, with regard to mediate disputes, that requires agreement with other parties besides the Board of Supervisors. In other words, you can't just go into the judges and say, hey, we're here to mediate disputes without them saying, okay, right? So, so there is, there is that balancing act in that, in that regard, in this case of mediate disputes. Let's see.
And that's very firm back to the resolution.
Right, the resolution, and that was point 16. Point 13 was, what, what I wanted was, what I suggested was, and, and we'll work this out when, when we get to it, well, we're working on now. Legal matters and ballot matters and election matters do not fall under this, this category of, of day to day. That phrase has been taken up, to my knowledge, and the, the term day to day isn't in there. What was the other one that I saw? That was almost the same as day to day?
Routine.
Routine, okay. Routine decisions, okay? So we got to somehow, I think, have a little tighter grasp of what's routine, what isn't routine. What do we want to hear about, what do we not want to hear about? Mr. Antonori's been clear, for instance, that there's, there's stuff that he doesn't want to hear about, you know? At least until it's more developed or something like that. Did you have any, any further comment, Mr. Antonori, by any chance?
No, I mean, there's, there's, for lack of a better term, rudimentary things that occur with the daily operations of the county that I think have, for the most part, been performing as, as intended, and that if we intend to do any changes, then that, that would then be, you know, brought before the board, or if Ms. Gilman or Mr. Casey sees any issues that they think need to be changed, they would brought, bring that to the board. But the routine stuff, again, I know you don't like the word, but the, the stuff that occurs and the daily function of county government, I think, is reserved to the county administrator and the deputy county administrator.
I guess my concern is that, or how does it play out when somebody is, okay, I'm getting a lot of calls, let's just say on a staff member that works within a certain department, and it's continuous list of complaints. As a Board of Supervisors, does that go to Sharon first, or do that, I then go to the county, well, I should say county administrator and say, look, I'm having a lot of complaints about this person. Where do we go from here? I mean, I guess that would be a routine administrative thing, right? So I guess we just want a little bit more clarification on our supervision. Are we distancing ourselves from that? Are we trying to get more in touch with that kind of issue? And, and the resolution, I haven't seen the most, the one that's coming up on Tuesday. Could you send that to me, Sharon? I got the...
Yeah.
Send it to me. Okay, send it to me, because I just want the people to know that I, I am on vacation. I haven't been looking at my, at my emails consistently, although I've had a lot of them. But I would like if you could resend that, because I have a hundred emails, and I'd like to just focus on that before I come back.
Madam Gomez, this is the perfect time to talk about all of these issues. This is a big deal, in my opinion, in the administrative position. So in, in the case that you're talking about, where you have a rogue employee or something like that, you'd call, Sharon would probably go to Ms. Graham, perhaps, and say, we've got this, this issue, and start working, working it out with Ms. Graham. There might be a process where, I mean, if it was really egregious, we'd give her the, I was sure, lighten the place on fire or something like that, they could pretty much get instantly fired by, by Ms. Gilman, and we'd probably agree that that's a good thing. If it's not anything like that, then, then there'd be a process where probably the, the ending decision would be by the merit board? Am I right about that? No?
No. It depends on the classification of the employee, but typically in a director position, what I would do is, of course, work with the employee, determine what, do an investigation if necessary, find out what the exact cause of the various complaints are, if there's counseling that's needed, or, or some kind of discipline that would be within my purview to do, documenting everything along the way, building, you know, a map of history, if we will. And then ultimately, if, if it was so, you know, if it kept occurring and occurring and occurring and, and performance was not improving, that would be a discussion as to potential termination if necessary.
Well, I think I would like to figure out what exactly would happen, because if you have a situation where somebody's been there a long time, and as everyone does in every form of government or any kind of organization, you kind of get set in your ways, and you don't want to hear anything different because you've done it this way for all these years, and you feel like it's done the right thing. But if customer service is an issue in which a staff is being rude and it keeps on coming up, how do you deal with that? I mean, that is maybe, maybe they need to go to customer service, kind of some kind of, hey, and everyone needs to do that. You know, we all kind of need to go and get retrained on why we're here and how we work for the public and how they pay for our salary, right? So we have to be more, I would guess, I'd say, listen more or whatever the situation is. So how would that work? How would I, if I say, hey, you know, the county administrator, I am receiving seven or eight, you know, complaints about the way in which our staff members present themselves to the public, and do I tell you, I think this person, from what I see this pattern is, that, you know, they are not doing service to the county because they are not listening? I mean, and then we sit down and talk about it, or do you then take a day off? Or how does it work?
I mean, in that kind of scenario, I would take your complaints, your feedback, and I would discuss it with the individual employee, perhaps with another person present as a witness, you know, really dig into what the cause is behind the, the concern. There's always two sides to every story. I'd want to know what the feedback was from the, from the person, what happened, what the full measure of the situation. And then I would bring that back to you and share information with you, and we could walk through it, but without, you know, knowing a specific situation to go into or anything like that. It really is, when you come to the management of the professionals, we have to keep our, trust our professionals to a degree, but also provide them training and, and feedback and performance improvement. And if that doesn't improve, then we would have to have much tougher conversation.
Okay.
And I would have told the board after.
So the way, the way I see it, Ms. Gomez, is it depends on the level of the employee, right? Like Ms. Gilman was saying. So if it's, if it's a director, you as an individual supervisor can bring that to the attention of either Ms. Gilman or Mr. Casey. They will approach that director to have that discussion. If you do not see the modification to behavior that you expected as a result of that, then you would come to put it on an agenda to have a discussion at a work session with the three of us, because under the, the operational control aspect of that, we can then, as the three of us, direct that director to follow the policy. And then if they fail to do that, then they would be insubordinate to the board, and we can have them terminated. Just like if I was, I said this before, if I was supervisor and Ms. Mara was elections director, I would have fired her in a heartbeat, and I still say that today. And by the way, if she wants to sue me, she can more than happily do that. She can go fly a kite as far as I'm concerned. I don't take threats from punk bureaucrats, but let's just leave it at that. I would have fired her, right? Because that behavior, going behind the back of the board and changing policy through the legislature is, is, in my opinion, insubordination and grounds for firing. And that's my opinion, and I don't care whether she likes it or not. But if that were to happen again, not saying that it will, with our new elections director, and she went behind the back of the board and spoke with either individuals at the Association of the Counties or, or to the legislature without coming to us first and telling us, we'd fire her too. You know, they, they work for us, the Board of Supervisors. They don't work for themselves, and they don't work for, you know, sure as heck, they don't work for the secretary of the state or any other elections directors or any other elections department. They work for the Board of Supervisors, and that's the key reason we're redoing this org chart, so that's clear to the directors, that they fall under the purview and the policy guidance of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
I have some comments about that. And, and I would say that in the case, well, I was a union representative in the Border Patrol. So what I said, I said, okay, I am a union representative, and I'm, I'm saying, I think the chief's policies are stupid or something like that, okay? Then as me acting as a Border Patrol rep, or union representative, I can do that because I'm putting on this union hat. If I'm just going to be out there as an employee, then I cannot do that. So there's, there's fine lines that, that I would not be entirely confident in trying to figure out where that fine line was, but I always say that those lines are worth finding and hunting for, okay? So as a, as a general rule, I would like Cochise County to be known as a place where it's, our outlook is, it's better to keep employees, if possible, and put them through the counseling and whatever else they need to keep them online instead of trying to replace them. Because we've talked about a whole bunch of times how a person gains institutional knowledge after, after a certain period on the job, and we don't want to be the training county for every other big county around if possible. So I guess that concludes my remarks. Do you have further questions, Ms. Gomez?
One more question, just kind of like, okay, so when we're talking about staff, so let's just say, and this is just me thinking and being devil's advocate and thinking of every situation while we're talking about this, let's just say either the deputy administrator or the county administrator, a Board of Supervisor feels that, you know, they're not being heard or things are not being brought up to their attention. How in this org do we go about addressing that?
With the county administrator not doing that person's job?
Yeah, let's just say...
That is directly your, your ability to, you are the boss of the county administrator. So that would be your sole authority as a board, not just individually, to bring that in a performance discussion in an executive session.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna mention with regard to executive session, there's, there's certain kinds of disciplinary action, if they come to the Board of Supervisors, it requires a unanimous vote. So that's, that's in there in that 11251, saying, well, what requires a unanimous vote? And there's certain disciplinary action which does.
So, so say if, if, we'll use me as an example, I would, through open meetings law, not to violate that, do, who would I tell, or who would I notify? Laura, the clerk, that I have an issue with the county administrator, and I want to have a work session or an executive session regarding what my issues are? Would that be the way to do it? Within this chart, within this new way, you know, with this new approach?
And then Human Resources would send the county administrator a notification, and the county administrator would determine whether that would be sent in public session.
And I'm sorry, you cut off. What would happen on this?
So then Human Resources would send the county administrator a written notification that a, a meeting was being held regarding that person's performance, and that person, the county administrator, the individual employee themselves, would determine if that would be an executive or in public session, that discussion.
Okay. That's it.
I guess that puts us to item 11. I guess that puts us to item 11.
Item 11 is going to be, well, item 10, actually. Item 11 will be, oh, sorry.
Mine's crossed up. My name is crossed up.
I'm jumping around a bit here. Let's just, uh, item nine is a through community enhancement expenditures for District Two for architectural design of a flag pavilion at Camp Nakco, and that's through Supervisor Gomez.
Yeah, that that is, do I go ahead and speak now?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, I would really encourage both supervisors to go down and, um, tour Camp Nakco. It is incredible what they're doing, incredible what they've done for the Buffalo Soldier. It's an incredible amount of history that really we as a county are not doing enough to promote. What this money would do would establish, um, the flag pole that would be able to raise the flags of those, as I understand it. I I I'm I'm sorry, my military, I'm I've been on vacation, so I'm trying to think of it. I guess the 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 patrol or the battalion or whatever it is of the soldiers that were there, we would be able to raise those flags on a daily basis. It would set, you know, the the concrete foundation, the pole, and then have and be able to pay for the flags and have a little bit left over pride for lights or whatever else they would need.
No, I would agree, Madam Gomez, that the there's probably no other community around that I know of that venerates the Buffalo Soldiers as much as this community, yet it is not enough. And I'm a big fan of the Buffalo Soldiers, big fan.
Okay, good. So I have your support, I hope. Yeah, I think it's a really good thing and I and really, um, if you can, when you have a spare day, go down there. It is amazing what they have done with very, with, you know, going out and getting their own funding sources. And, um, it's everything from a library to a community event that you can hold events there. It it's it's quite incredible and I really have to, uh, give my, you know, tip my hat off to this group that have done so much with so little, so.
All right. I'm also a big fan of General Pershing.
Yeah, there you go.
And, uh, you know, they they got that museum on the forest, fantastic museum. So all the tourists that come to town should definitely go to the Buffalo Soldier Museum and the Camp Nakco when they visit our fabulous county.
And then number 10, Supervisor Gomez requested that be removed, um, at this time. The Community Enhancement Fund, the other community enhancement.
Yeah, I I, you know, we just found out that Sierra Vista is going to be sponsoring the Boys and Girls Club in Douglas. I worked hard back in 2008 with a group of people to try to bring the Boys and Girls Club to Douglas. We just do not have the, I guess it's the endowment money or the seed money, which was $150,000 at that time in 2000, I guess it was nine or 10. And so just found out today, or I think it was yesterday, that Sierra Vista is going to sponsor us in Douglas. And so down the road, I would like to realign that money to go to the endowment fund for the Boys and Girls Club in Douglas. So I think this is a better use of it.
That'll be on a future agenda then.
Yeah, that'll be on June 17th.
Okay. Uh, and then the final number 11 of the Community Enhancement Fund for, um, a basketball program in Douglas.
Yes. You know, sports is probably the one big thing that Douglas has had ever since the mines closed and left basically a vacuum um, of, uh, nothing but maybe crimina- criminality available. I'm, I mean, it it is, it was a huge change. I grew up in that time when, you know, they left, there was not much for the kids to do. We didn't have much funds in in the city coffers. So this would be establishing two leagues for middle and high school students to play basketball during the summer. And, um, and the city is going to, we're co-sponsoring it with, um, the City of Douglas and with the the team, I don't have it in front of me, who is organizing it. So they come down and they put it on its kids from, you know, charter schools, public schools, what doesn't matter, kids in the summer to be able to have two leagues that keeps them off the street. That's it.
Okay.
And I think and I'll have the mayor talking about it too. Um, he'll call in from his, uh, there's a rural health meeting up in Flagstaff. He's going to call in and tell you more about it.
Number 12 is, um, from the clerk of the Superior Court regarding a digital evidence portal. And I see that Deputy Clerk of the Court, Rachel Grave, is here.
Good morning, Deputy Clerk of the Superior Court.
And this is relatively simple and we're not asking for money out of the general fund, so that's easy. Um, we have introduced digital evidence into the clerk's office into the Superior Courts there. And this is asking you guys to approve an intergovernmental service agreement, extending the service between the Administrative Office of the Courts and Thompson Reuters contract that they have so that we can use the digital evidence system. Um, this system, it will help to bring in the evidence digitally, so you don't have a lot of physical things going, which cuts down on storage, cuts down on things getting lost. It's very secure. All the counties, with the exception of Apache, are um, using this platform so far. And the funding will come from our Digital and Document Evidence Storage and Retrieval Conversion Fund, which is restricted for purposes like, um, jury presentation systems and digital evidence.
What did you say last about juries?
That fund, the Digital Evidence Fund, what we call it, is also, um, restricted to use for jury presentation systems that we use that for.
I thought you said hung jury, but you didn't.
No, mm-mm, mm-mm. You're welcome. Any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues?
And I guess I should say the cost is $5 per case that it's used in. Okay. Oh, it's easy. Thank you.
Ms. Gilman?
Um, so we have an extension request for an assurance agreement for King's Ranch at Coronado Subdivision. Pioneer Title attached to your agenda item will be that assurance agreement as well as previous assurance agreements. This is a continued extension request. Paul Esparza from Development Services has been working on this and he can answer any questions you may have.
Did you want to present to us today?
Sure, I I will. And I think for the benefit of Supervisor Gomez and Antonori, I'm not sure if, I know Supervisor Crosby, you probably have heard these before, I believe.
And and I'd I'd like to know, where is it compared to King's Ranch Road and 92, for instance?
Okay, all right. Um, and and in location, you're saying, um, so this is right off of, um, Highway 92 and Conjacote Drive.
Okay.
So that's, that is District One, that is in your district.
Very nice neighborhood.
It is a nice neighborhood. And but for the benefit of the other two supervisors, I just wanted, so the purpose of these assurance agreements is just to guarantee that subdivision improvements are completed before lots are released. So this is also mentioned in, uh, in state statutes that the board, you know, would would require that assurances are placed. So what happens is, um, generally we have done these for three years, but we've we've noticed that that time passes very quickly. So we've extended these to five years, but um, anytime, um, that a subdivider will come to us, um, they will say, hey, you know, I need to renew this assurance agreement. Or if they request a release of lots, um, there's a process that we would prepare this lot release. We would, I would, we would get with the engineering department, they will go verify that all of the improvements are done. And then there's a document that's signed by the, um, county engineer as well as the Development Services Director that gets recorded and then that is sent to the title company, which basically allows them to release those lots.
Okay. How familiar are you with the plan for this new development in terms of drainage and water flow and so on? Because in my opinion, that has been a problem in that area.
And I know that there are areas, I know that I I believe, and I don't know if there's anybody from engineering present, but I know that there there are recharge areas, you know, basins in that in that subdivision. They did a full drainage analysis for that subdivision. So I know that there have, engineering department has been out there. I know they've looked at different situations that have been identified, but I know that the entire subdivision, we're talking like 840 acres, um, you know, is what all the phases make up that subdivision.
Do you happen to be familiar with the street called Big Spur, which is on the bottom of the hill and on the on the far east of that that, uh, subdivision off of Conjacote?
And I believe I may have spoken in the past, it's been a couple of years, but I know that I may have even spoken to the gentleman. Don't recall his name now, but I did uh, convey that information back to Jackie. I know that the engineering staff has been out there to look at resolutions for any issues they've had with with drainage.
Yeah. Oddly, water still goes downhill. And therefore whoever's at the bottom of the hill is going to get more than everybody else. And that was a situation, so it's got to have someplace to go. So, uh, and then, but i- in that case, where there should have been, in my opinion, some kind of big old storm drain to get it out of there, there wasn't. And to to fix that would have meant tearing up the road and and, uh, having to fix all the utility lines and everything else. So I hope that doesn't happen again. That's that's all my my comment there.
One thing I did want to mention, so within the subdivision regulations, there are five factors that the board may consider. Um, in the background information, I did provide responses in in black bold, but uh, we look at are the are the property taxes current? Yes, they are. We look at how much of the improvements have been completed to date. So far in this subdivision, 160 lots have been released out of 303, so it's about 53% completion of the, um, improvements. And then we look at, the board can look at how many previous extensions. So there's been one previous extension. I I recall bringing that back, I think to the board back in 2018.
Do you remember from from that that, uh, neighborhood where Big Spur is, which direction are the, is more development going to go to the north?
It is. They are moving toward the note, uh, to the north. Um, we were able to go out last week and we actually flew with the drone. So we'll show you, um, where the predominance of development is occurring, but on any given day, there is, there's a new home being built. Most of you probably that drive by can see that. So it is an active subdivision. They are continuing to move forward and we'll probably be expecting a request to release some lots soon from them.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of it. Uh, so my only caution is, like I said, having to do with drainage and and whoever it is that's an aggrieved person is going to undoubtedly come back to the county and say, hey, you approved this and and such and such is wrong with it. And i- i- and then the county goes, no, that was a developer. Okay? And that may be true, but if if we can, you know, keep that from happening to begin with, all the better.
Okay, right.
So all that, listen, all that, all that drainage basin stuff and all that kind of stuff, it's it's great and and, uh, and and I hope the the water table gets replenished and all that, but there's limitations to it. Sometimes it doesn't work like everybody wished that it would in the in the beginning.
Understood, yeah.
Madam Gomez?
Yes, in this realm of how you use assurance, would you give me the definition of it?
So basically, what assurance is a guarantee that we require to make sure the subdivider will complete the all of the improvements before lots are released. The county uses what's called a third-party trust. So the lots are basically held in trust by the title company and they are not released until we verify that those improvements have been completed. And then we record that release and then we notify, uh, for example, Pioneer Title, that they are now ready to be released.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Antonori, I have a question for you that's going to catch you a little bit off guard, but I think that you mentioned one time that when you were in Africa, you had something to do with building grade control structures. Would you care to talk about that at all? Does that ring a bell?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't particularly when I was in, uh, Africa. It's just that I I saw it, uh, in Africa. I didn't build anything. So there's, there's, there's ways that they build, uh, for erosion control and water runoff, um, basically rock structures, um, you know, like I I talked to, we actually have a couple of residents in the county that do stuff like that. And there's a ranch out, uh, near Turkey Creek that has done that very successfully, where they've created these terraced sort of rock wall structures and washes and draws to slow the flow of water down, to improve recharge and to prevent erosion. And it worked rather well. And it's something that I brought up during a flood control district meeting that maybe we should be looking at doing uh, something along those lines in some of these, uh, places where it's it's applicable, that it could be done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonori. And that was kind of what I was getting at. Uh, if 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 somebody can make a determination, okay, if if the ground is sloped this much when the snow melts or is a monsoon, we're going to have to have X amount of grade control structures or something like that. You know, and 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 that was done to a a minor degree, as I recall, just to the west of this Big Spur zone. But, uh, I I don't know if it's sufficient. Now, on the other hand, I haven't, I haven't heard the guy complain lately either, so maybe it got fixed. But, you know, just, uh, you know, when it gets into the, uh, weeds of what this developer is doing as far as drainage and so on and so forth, what was done there was not quite enough. And and you might consider some kind of stipulation of, okay, if these, if these three crescent-shaped grade control structures don't catch all the water and it's got to go across the street, we need to have a culvert here to take it where it needs to go instead of.
So are you suggesting we add to the assurance agreement?
I do not know, but when it comes down to whatever, whatever negotiations, uh, the county does with the developer and 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 this, this, uh, it it's going to be part of it, isn't it? Isn't it? Okay, the way, the way they plan this community, the way they plan this neighborhood has to take these erosion things into consideration.
There was a complete drainage analysis that would have been done when this, um, when the the final plat was approved. And I can certainly, we'll need to check in with engineering department. Yeah.
Check. Keep further, uh, you know, future complaints from not occurring if possible.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Esparza.
Okay.
Uh, any, any further questions for my colleagues?
Yep. Nope.
Number 14 is a approved lease agreement renewal nine, uh, between Cochise County and Northrop Brumman for space at the Bisbee Douglas International Airport. The Northrop Brumman has been using this space at at BDI for several years now, so this is a renewal. Um, putting together the space they have along the airport, a runway area, kind of out past some hangers, uh, as well as.
It's just like a an empty section of runway. It's not a hangar itself. It's just like a a hot pad or something that they use? Is that what it is?
Uh, they actually brought in and.
Hold on.
Here comes Daryl.
Sorry, Daryl, get to the microphone first.
I'm sorry. They actually have, um, a structure that they brought in and built. It's it's kind of like, um, um, I was, I was trying to describe it the other day, um, kind of like a balloon, uh, for the most part that they have. And then they have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, temporary shelter.
Yes. And then they also have a, a mobile mini office that they have set up out there, um, and a couple of sheds.
So it's, basically, that's what I was getting at. It's basically the lot, right? We're just leasing them the lot, so to speak, just a section of the. Okay, okay, that's cool.
On the end of the tarmac down there, on the other end where all the hangers are at. And then, and then they have about 1,500 square feet in the terminal that they lease from us as well.
On a separate lease.
Yes.
All right.
I do have a question. So, um, you know, I went and toured the BDI. I have to say this every time. So I, that was such a beautiful, uh, terminal, small terminal that was our deck on. I'm just, it was sad to see what was done with it. But I did see the space at that Northam, right, is, um, that's the the company we're talking about, right? I thought it was Raytheon, but it's.
Northrop, yeah.
Northrop? Okay. And they do have, and they do have quite a bit of space. Do, are they going to be using it, um, like, you know, during the week? Or because when I went there, I went by there a couple of times, there's like nobody there. And I'm just wondering, is it just a a place for them to have occasional meetings every couple of months or are they using that facility very much?
They, I, when they were using, when they had the unmanned flight program, they were using it quite a bit. What their actual uses are now and how often they're there, I don't know.
Okay. Cause I think, um, you know, as everyone's talking about BDI being instrumental in this whole port of entry and economic growth, we need to really kind of look at how we're going to use BDI. And I mean, I think it's great they're there. I didn't see the, when I went out there by the way the hangers were, is this north of the terminal or is it more by where the hangers are?
It's it's way down on the, on the northeast end of the tarmac down there on the other east, east of all the existing hangers that are out there.
Right, okay. It's just, it's east and a little bit north of it, right? Okay, now. Okay, now I know. It's just, it's just a pattern. They just had kind of like a, it it's just kind of equipment there, right?
Yes, yes, that's all it is.
Okay, so this is just renewing it for how long?
Uh, it's another year lease.
Another year, okay. All right, thank you.
For the questions, thank you.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So we have two grants, the final two items on the agenda are two grants for the Health Department. One for uh, from First Things First for uh, child care center health consultants consultations that the Health Department will do of childcare centers. Um, and we have Barb Lane and a new employee with us to present. So if you would introduce yourself.
Perfect, yeah. Good morning, Chairman Antonori, Supervisor Crosby and Supervisor Gomez. My name is Emily Harris. I am the Director of Clinical Services for the Health Department. I'm here to present on a request for continued approval of a grant through First Things First, which allows us to do countywide um, childcare health consultation services. So ensuring that our uh, childcare centers throughout the county um, are safe and effective um, for children uh, zero to five years of age. Um, the training and um, just adequate support services are provided. And this is something that we've had implemented since two thousand fifteen. And the renewal is for one additional year um, until June of two thousand twenty-six for the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars.
I noticed that Ms. Avon had the ear to ear grin over there that she can't hide, so it's probably a good thing.
And then I'll clarify that this is entirely grant funded. It supports two part-time employees in the Health Department to do site-to-site travel um, and safety consultation for the centers. And there's nothing out of operational funds that this project utilizes. It is fully grant funded.
Thank you very much.
Uh, let me just ask a question. You guys do a lot of, is a lot of that also done in the Douglas, um, you know, uh, center there at the county building?
So Supervisor, this is across the entire county, Douglas included. So these two staff dispatch out to every childcare center within Cochise County to include Douglas.
Okay, and so basically you're talking zero to five, which is the most crucial years of development for a child. And so this is just consulting with the mothers and and the family members? Is that what it does?
It's consultation for the folks that are working at and running the childcare um, centers. So ensuring that all of their protocols are safe, that things that could potentially harm a child zero to five years of age are kept, you know, out of the way, um, that their staffing ratios are safe and adequate. They're practicing proper infection control practices like hand washing, really just ensuring that the the facility itself and then the practices of the staff there um, are safe to have uh, children zero to five.
So this is childcare centers. So do you have, I mean, I was taking a walk and I saw a couple of houses that are childcare centers. Do you guys have a list, right, of all those and anybody who wants to set up? Uh, can you just tell me what is the minimum amount that, so if I have two kids that I decide I'm going to look after, does that come under your umbrella or is there a certain, you know, minimum?
No, that doesn't come under our invol- umbrella. That's through the Department of Economic Security that licenses those individual childcare homes. And then that's regulated by Arizona Department of Health Services.
And you guys don't have any involvement with that or any tie into those, those childcare centers?
No.
Okay, okay. So these are just the ones that have, are established and run by the county?
So these are actually independent proprietors. They're not run by the county.
Okay, but you have oversight over them is what I guess I mean to say.
Not necessarily oversight. It's regulatory technical assistance.
So you're giving them the training and making sure that they are working within those regulations?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have a, I mean, do you know just approximately how many there are that you, you know, oversee the regulations in the county?
Um, for this particular program, I believe, I'm trying, you know, I can't give you an exact number. I believe there's sixty some odd facilities.
Wow, that's a lot. And that's that, and two employees are constantly giving them training and overseeing the regulations.
Correct, it is a lot. And they include their time to travel geographically. It's quite the lift.
Um, nothing, i- i- you know, that's really important. You have to give it right to me, but I would like to know what the minimum, you know, numbers are that these childcare centers, how many kids they have. And and just like a little bit more understanding about that, if you don't mind, down the road, it doesn't have to be, it's not ASAP, but maybe we can have a conversation about it.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I detect Ms. Gomez is going to be satisfied with whatever uh, future communications you establish with the Health Department about the matter. Is that correct? You don't want to talk about it anymore?
I do sit on the board, but no, I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Antonori, do you have any further comment before we move, move on to the next Health Department, Health and Social Services?
Next is the um, delegation agreement between Arizona Department of Environment, Environmental Quality and Cochise Health and Social Services Environmental Health Division. It would expire in two thousand fifty. This is the uh, guiding delegation agreement for our environmental health services as they conduct their inspections. And we have Natalie Johnson here. She's our lead and Director of the Environmental Health Division.
Good morning, uh, Chair Antonori and Gomez, Supervisor Gomez and Supervisor Crosby, is it too low or too high? There we go. Sound better?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, this is a, our delegation agreement that we have with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, which we have had since before me. Mike, you've been here longer. So it's been for several years that we keep this delegation agreement. It pretty much gives us the delegation for onsite wastewater systems, septic systems. So we do those systems. Uh, we, they apply for one, we do the reviews. We also do um, the complaints relating to it. So if the system is failing, we'll get with the homeowner and work with them on resolving those issues and stuff per the delegation agreement.
I understand. I was wondering what it applied to and and because it is such a long period of time, we're talking twenty-five years, but I understand what it is. So in the past, I believe that Development Services had authority over septic systems. And now the Health Department does in in our county. Is that correct?
Uh, well, the Health Department had it before and there was a time period which we did the delegation to switch over to Development Services for a temporary time. Um, and then Development Services no longer had an engineer or whatever, but we also still had to review Development Services work because it had to be either an engineer or a registered sanitarian to do the reviews. So we'd, we took that delegation agreement back per the state's requirements.
And it's been that way for quite a while.
That is correct.
Does your associate have any comments?
Um, just here for technical support.
How about that?
Mike McGee with Environmental Health. I took over the septic program back when we got it back from planning and zoning.
Okay.
And we always, always have had the delegation agreement since probably in the night, mid nineteen eighties.
Okay, how long have you worked for the county?
Since two thousand five.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any comments about item number sixteen?
No, thank you.
Nope, nope, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all the agenda items other than the state and federal legislation.
Okay, Mr. Antonori, would you care to talk about item number seventeen, which is uh, federal legislative matters and other uh, legislative policy matters?
Well, I mean, uh, I'm sure everybody's been watching the news with the uh, big beautiful bill and some of the challenges that uh, that's dealing with, but there's a lot of slowdowns grant dollar wise that are in there that may impact the state and also the county. And then, of course, the county is also waiting on the legislature, which uh, last I spoke with our state delegation, they are nowhere closer to resolution on the budget uh, than they were a few weeks ago. So we're still waiting on that. So we're just gonna, I guess, hold our breath. See what happens.
Madam Gomez, do you have any uh, final comments?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not pulling for for uh, votes or soliciting votes, but I would like a work session about public records in the.
Yes.
Yes, me too, me too.
Yeah, me too, me too.
I'm not pulling.
We need to have that. We need to, we need to get that done. It's becoming a problem and it's uh, potentially going to cost this county a lot of money if we don't get this under control.
Because they're, they're filing, is, is someone has filed a suit against us, right? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's in the works. We, we'd like it not to be a suit.
So can I ask for kind of a little bit more of a direction? Public records is a large topic. Is there something specific?
So, yeah, so what we got is, we've got a, a situation where um, there's a perception that certain entities within the county are subverting the open records law by claiming attorney-client privilege on documents or claiming uh, security on documents or claiming all sorts of reasons to prevent those documents from being disclosed. And there's a contradicting opinion from other entities that say, no, that that isn't a security issue or it isn't attorney-client privilege. So the concern is that some individuals or entities may be abusing that exclusion to prevent disclosure. And we need to look at a policy for that or we need to define, like I think I had mentioned earlier, when we do public records, what is something that requires the county attorney's office to review or what can be released immediately to the public? And what we could publish on our website to to reduce the number of public records requests? Because if we could just put the stuff and post it, even if it's just a library or a, if we have a public records index that has all these things listed on the website, it would be uh, a lot easier for people to go access it there than to keep asking for it over and over. And the other, other thing is if someone does a public records request and that request is filled, the 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 record of that filling and that document should be posted somewhere on the county website. So we don't get the same request for the same thing over and over and over and over again. So that's the kind of stuff that I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah, so I also would like to talk about the fees, you know, just to, I'm hearing all kinds of different fees that we charge and some are pretty outrageous. So if that could be part of it, you know, uh, what are we charging and why? And is it, are there different fees for different requests?
Okay, fair enough.
I wonder, Ms. Gilman, if we'd like to explore having a presentation from a citizen that is intimately involved in the subject and or their representative. Well, we'll just explore. Okay.
I think that's kind of maybe a good idea, only because um, I think the person that you're talking about has been doing this a long time and seen a lot of, a lot of issues over the years. And um, it would be good to hear from the source that's aggrieved on, you know, all the reasons why this has gotten to this point. He fills in then, maybe the, I don't know, then the other side with the county attorney, then comma, I I don't know, we can talk about that. But I I think that that's definitely a good suggestion.
Okay, then uh, if we were to have such a meeting as I just mentioned, then perhaps we could have an executive session after that to uh, hear from our county attorney.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
I'll consult with them to see how they want to handle that.
Are there any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, um, I just want to just reiterate and make sure that we're going to do, be doing a work session and probably, I can't remember when we looked at doing it for the county roads.
There is a work session scheduled on a quarterly update on county roads for June.
June ten.
June ten. We have it at one P M for a public works quarterly information update on roads. And then I know Supervisor Gomez, you've mentioned having some opportunity for the public to share their concerns regarding county roads. And I think that will be a separate meeting from that one, from that uh, quarterly work session. So that has not been scheduled yet, but we will.
Yeah, I I think, I I mean, it's just incessant or just a continuous. If there's any one subject that I keep on hearing about is um, the county roads. And so we need to do that. And in that quarterly report, will we be talking about the, the schedule on which they do the county roads and the method in which they are using to blade and all that, that we will get that deep into the weeds?
The last part, the method of.
Blade, blading when they blade a road.
And how they blade.
Yeah, they could, they could discuss that. Um, and just go into the details of how they would be plating.
Well, yeah, she's got a concern about the crowning of a road.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think that's important to discuss what we do, because when the public comes, they're going to discuss, that's going to be one of their main issues and how we are doing, how we are maintaining the roads, the procedures that we're using. So to be discussing them at least out in the open so people can hear about it. And then um, when they come in, we even have people who have worked for the county in the past, right, on, in the road. So I think the more um, we can be transparent about what we're doing today, then we can see, you know, the, when they come and 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 talk about it, they can tell us what is, they see is working and not working. So that's just uh, my viewpoint.
Okay, I got uh, one more question for you, Madam Gomez, which is, would you care to be the invocation designee supervisor for our next meeting?
Yes, I've already reached out to um, Pastor, I guess, as we call Cleveland. And I'm going to give him a call, make sure, but I'll, I'll find somebody. Yes, I would do that.
Okay. We will, in uh, seeing no further business before the board. We will now prepare to adjourn.
All right, thank you.
And wait.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Good job.
Next meeting will be Tuesday, June third at ten A M for the Library District Meeting in the Hearing Room to approve minutes and demands and also approve E-rate consulting services agreement. We are now adjourned.